In the juvenile system, when we got to send them to adult, then they got that exposure again for at least the four years. That's a long time. It's a long time to go to prison. And that may be what happens at some point, but because of their age, because they're fifteen, if you think about, and even with respect to the adult system, if we send a youth over and they're young, we keep them in detention until they turn seventeen, and then we listen to the adult jail. Even if they get convicted as an adult, they're typically sent to a prison where there's a younger population. So if you take a fifteen-year-old and throw him into a prison situation, nothing. No education, no treatment, no nothing. So they're coming out at some point, and are they gonna be better off? Is the community gonna be safer because they went to prison? Or is the community gonna be safer if we try to deal with the issues that have affected that fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-old? And then send them to the court to see if they can make it something today? And is it difficult? Absolutely. Do we have a crystal ball? We absolutely do not. But what we do have is the benefit of a ton of information to try to make the best decision possible at any time. It's a hard work community to understand cheeriness. And that's why these kinds of four or five quarters, so that people can have an understanding of why a certain decision may have been made. And it may be a fifteen, I'll give you this example. I've only had, in my career, one fourteen-year-old that I certified to stand trials on the dock. And that was the one day in my career that I felt like I'm gonna go home and I'm gonna boil the covers over my head and I'm not getting up. But you get up the next day and start over again because it's so hard. But it was a hor- he may not have gone, it was a horrible situation, where literally driving by a park, had some meet with some guy, and they just decided to shoot him and shot him in the head. And there was a whole lot of other stuff going on. But the average fourteen, fifteen-year-old would probably not have sent him to adult.
The one, excuse me, the child that he sent, what was the end result?
I don't know that they actually finished that case yet. I don't think they finished it last time.
Historically, when a child is looked at as adult like that, it's, he's done.
You know, like I said, I, you know, I don't, I've not seen a jury in this case. You know, they might, they might, uh, that's five, nine, nine, one. And, you know, they make it a long time, but probably not as much as they would have got that to get in a court.
No questions?
The way they're gonna come out is, you know, the prison system, you know, it's designed to make money. And so, and that sounds horrible, but it is so true. And so, you know, they don't have the programs in the prison system that we do with the juvenile system. And so people come around and they're like, oh, it's hard to make it because they've just been prisoned.
So question back here.
Yeah, I do have a question as far as the juveniles go. Is there a program, well, one, I'm still new here in Texas. I've been here for about a year. Is it a program where the courts appoint local people in the community, a community-based program for those juveniles to go through? And the reason why I ask that is in Indiana, I was born in Gary, I went through the juvenile system, and that's something that they did for me when I was getting in trouble. That program, to me, it actually changed my life because it wasn't, you had to go to this facility and go through these programs. It's almost like you was being punished again as a juvenile because everyone, one, was judging you, two, you just didn't wanna, maybe that curriculum wasn't the best for you. So I was actually fortunate enough to get teamed up with a officer named Officer Summers. And it was like a whole different environment. He'd come check on me, I'd go meet with him. We'd go riding around. And to me, that has been the best. Fast forward, when I turned seventeen, I went off into the military. And that's been my goal, is to give back. I know Judge, he's been to a few, one of my events. Every month, we do things with the kids, and that's why it's important.
So we have many, many community-based programs for our youth to address everything from ages. There is a process for that, and they have to go through the Dallas County process for what's called an RFP, Request for Proposals, and they're able to present. Typically, we're looking at some type of unique way the service is going to be delivered to impact their youth and their families. And so you're right in regards to the, you know, the scientific evidence, which is, you know, everything now, we try to look at, you know, best practices and things that are supported by, by, by careful scientific evidence. It is better, to the extent we can, to allow you to stay home with those community-based services and take them without a community placement or even send them off to the youth commission. So yeah, everything you can name, whether that's gang issues, whether that's sex offender treatment, whether that's drug treatment, whether that's just dealing with family violence issues. I joke because on Sunday, I do proper calls, and I can guarantee you, every Sunday, when I get a call, there's gonna be a minimum of one youth that has come in since Friday to Sunday because of some type of family violence. And usually it's two or three. And so everything that you can name in terms of an issue, we have community programs to address. Some of them will run again through the juvenile department, but again, other private organizations have contracts to provide those services for the Dallas County community. So they answer.
What's your next bet?
It's actually laser tag Dallas Police versus the community, February sixteenth.
What's the name of your organization?
My company is called Design Inc. I'm a for-profit, but what I do is I get with other local businesses and tell them, let's pour something back into the community. We always promote and advertise and get business, but we're not giving nothing back, especially to the kids.
So you provide some people that volunteer and mentor?
Yeah, so what we do is, I'll give you an example. In November, we did the Community versus Dallas Police Dodgeball Event. In that event, we were able to identify some kids that were struggling inside the school. We did it at the KB Pope Rec Center. I got two mentees out of that ordeal. One of the mentees was struggling very bad at school. When we got to the root of the problem, we found out that it was just because people was picking on him because he had a reading disability. So we identified that issue, we got him help with that, worked with the rec center, and his grades is good.
We're always looking for shit from Dallas County Juvenile Department, and, you know, maybe we can get hooked up with some, we vet everything, everything, because, you know, we have so much exposure.
Right.
But call us, we may be able to do something.
Yes, absolutely.
We're more acutely aware of it than others, you know, we see all the downstream consequences, all the bad stuff. And, but, we're more in charge of maintaining the order than trying to say the order is out of order. So, what's your question, sir?
You were saying about jobs. Well, a lot of times, people perish for the lack of knowledge and understanding. And a lot of times, you have repeat offenders. I work in banking, and I'm a young African-American male that's actually been able to work my way up into commercial banking, and at thirty-eight, being able to make six figures. Everybody can't say that. So, working in banking, I found that a lot of times, there are repeat offenders because they don't understand finances. So they do bad things or make bad decisions because they don't understand how to make money, and they keep doing the same thing. So a lot of times, maybe some of the organizations need to come out and partner with banks. We do free financial literacy for small business owners, and even educating small business owners on how to start a business. A lot of people have skill, but they need to have skill to start their own business rather than work for somebody, and teach them how to become business owners in the southern sector rather than go to the northern sector. They can become a business owner in their own community. They just need to, the education on how to start the business, whether it be an LLC, should it be styled as a DBA. So that's where us as the bank, we come in and do a networking event. I have one of my fraternity brothers that we partner with. Every third Thursday, we do a networking event, and we bring in small business owners, whether you're a startup, all the way up to those that are business owners where they can actually network. And I've actually had someone who was in prison for twenty years come there. We helped him out. He was flipping houses, but just didn't know how to style his business. He knew how to work, he knew how to do his craft. He just needed help with the business part. We set him up, got his business doc set up, and helped him set up his bank account. Taught him about how to set up credit card processing, that way you're able to take payments, you know, other kind of ways. But educating people to be more business savvy will alleviate some of the crime. And if they're, if they become empowered and being able to manage their money better, knowing how to invest, and knowing some of the products that banks have, like right now, BBVA Compass, the bank that I work for, we have a product where you can start investing your money with a hundred and fifty dollars into a mutual fund. A lot of times, people don't under- they don't know that. But if they were educated about that, they think they need thousands of dollars to start investing, where it's not that case. So maybe if you implement some of the financial literacy programs into the jails, where maybe you can have licensed bankers that come in to talk about finances and talk and educate maybe some of the prisoners on how to not come back. And this is the thing that we have in place, that can help you, that would alleviate some crime in these neighborhoods and actually empower them.
A step farther than that could be in the high schools.
Yeah.
See, John, because it's for one more talent among young people.
We do it in high schools too.
And they can run out there and run a street business and run away.
Matter of fact, this gentleman right here.
To parlay that into something legal and then run into the community colleges. A wealth of talent.
This gentleman right here, at Nova Academy, BBVA, we come in to do Bank Day, and we do it once a month. And what we do, we don't just talk about simple stuff. I mean, these kids are talking about interests, compound interest. How do we, how do I invest? They wanna know, I had a kid that asked me, can you tell me about experience, act of facts, and trends, you know, and how they work? But let me tell you, well, we go even further. We open them up accounts. And we actually give parents permission, but what we do, we get the parents engaged. So it becomes a collaborative, you know, setting where the parent and the student are engaged in making the finances better in the household. And so we come to the PTA meetings and educate the parents on financing, how to better your credit, how to, knowing that it's okay to have a lot of money, but if you have good credit, it'll take you much further. Because then that way, you pay lower, you have lower interest rates. You don't pay as much as you would if you had bad credit. So we like, you know, we go out there and educate the community about that as well.
You know, I'm gonna let Dave Campisi go before I let him go, and I'll tell you a story on how I met this guy. Ended up working a job for another officer at his house, right? So I have no special title to this guy, other than I met him working a job at his house. And here's a bunch of wealthy white people, right? And I said, hey, what do we do, just kinda just stay out here in the front, kinda watch the car? I would trust, I would trust these people my damn ass. I want you to watch them somewhere. Anyway, anyway, you know, from that, you know, sprang a relationship. We started talking about different things, golf, church, and all that. Realized we kinda stuck in the same cloth. And so he invites me playing golf, and before he know it, he invited to put together a Christian luncheon thing where he invited fifty guys, but only ten showed up, you know, the real people, right? So anyway, he's one of those guys that dares to reach out across the line, didn't care what color you are, where you're from, what your background is, how much money you got. You know, he's one of those kind of people. And I guarantee you, just the fact that he, we started that relationship, and I brought him here, you'll probably have ten other people here next time will do this, Mr. M. For a fact, I know he will. So, but that's what it's about, that's what it's about, that's what we're starting here. Dave, you wanna say something?
And we can say that until the civilian, if the civilian, civilian, and the other civilian to be here, the opportunity stays dead because if you're not here, if you don't invest to come in here and understand that there's options, then beating a bit will.
And he actually does a lot of outreach for underprivileged kids as well. So we're gonna start bringing, yeah, we know, we kinda have, we're okay, but we gotta get the folks that are not okay, right? We gotta get them in the doors. And again, we're gonna open this door every month until this room is full. So I appreciate you guys coming, and I definitely want to share that about Dave because, you know, definitely doing some good stuff in the community. So, brother, feel free.
I gotta coach basketball four o'clock, but I was just sitting there brainstorming, and I'm gonna ponder on a lot of, I like to use the word, everybody can talk, right? But it's about, you gonna do it or not, but it's being strategic. You gotta have a strategic, you gotta incentivize these people to get in here, number one. And maybe we do a small job fair, you know? What if we just save one life at a time? So you guys will see me, it's an honor to be here, and I hope I never see you at your place. So you'll see me at my place. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Officer Rowan, NPO at Central. And I think us as neighborhood patrol officers, we can get the word out to people, to me also, with your program, with your program, your program. That's what, that's what we do. We go out, and I do a lot of foot patrol in my area. Unfortunately, I'm leaving to another area, but I think that's what our job is to do, to help get this stuff out, this information out to the people in the community to help utilize these opportunities that come about. So I'm willing to do that, and I know my counterparts, our workers, will be willing to do that too. And I'm glad I came today because I learned four, five who thinks today. So that will help my people. But thank you.
I'll leave y'all with one good joke. So I'm a Christian, and I'll leave y'all with this. Y'all know what the difference between praying in church and praying in the casino is? You really mean in the casino.
Amen.
I wanna switch over real quick to, a lot of the community, one of it, one of the problems is our employment, how our officers don't reflect what the community looks like, you know, their perception. So Chief Walton here ran our personnel department for a while, hiring. He's come up with innovative programs to bring more minorities down and do pipelines and things like that. So I'm gonna let him comment a little bit on how that looked, maybe even why that dynamic's so difficult. Because a lot of people say, well, why do we have more black officers right here? They ain't applying, how can we have them? You know, or what special programs can we create to bring that to fruition? So Chief, talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, and so I guess you have a couple of dynamics at play. And I think we would all probably agree right now, being a police officer isn't getting invoked. That's not what people wanna do. They wanna do other things. What used to be a hero, unfortunately, now is considered villain in some places. So that has hurt, you know, our recruiting. The other thing that really hurts recruiting, and one of the things that really bothered me is, I read every folder, whether there was a recommendation to hire or not hire, to see why that was, and you look at the mistakes of you. And Judge, I think you said it right. Everybody over there probably made some mistakes, I mean, not here, in their younger days. Then you would look back and go, man, that wasn't real smart of me when I did that. And look, I can think of many mistakes I made as a youth. And it can preclude you from being a police officer, being a sheriff, going to become an attorney and on to being a judge. And people don't think about those when you're seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. And really looking at that, there's some studies out there that talk about the likelihood of, you know, when you're likely to commit crimes, it's usually between, I think it's like seventeen and twenty-four. That's where you're more likely to be doing, particularly your violent crimes, that you're gonna get caught up into that lifestyle, or hey, this is okay, this is what we're all doing. Just coincidentally, officers that are younger are also more likely to overuse force, to use excessive force. So the old adage, with age comes knowledge, is true, comes experience. So, you know, start looking at this, and that's where we started talking about this pipeline from high schools, you know, particularly in the southern sector, because the vision that we really see is there are people that wanna make differences in their community, and they already know it at the age of sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, and start bringing them into a culture where the expectation is you don't do certain things, things that would preclude you from becoming a police officer or being a lawyer. And you start surrounding them with good peers, good role models, and whether it's the sheriff's department or with the police department. And, you know, what I would like to see is opportunities that young people can be hired, say, by the police department as they get out of high school, who already, look, at that time, they've done, they could be a police officer if it was not for age and their education requirements. And go ahead, bring them on the department in some form or fashion, hook them up with some education reimbursement, so, and a college, required to attend college. So we're paying you, we're helping with some college reimbursement, and we've got you in a good culture to help support you in making good decisions. And whether you hit nineteen and a half and got your college degree, or twenty-one, then we immediately bring you into the police department. I'm convinced something like that would bring in thirty to forty people a year on top of whatever else we were hiring that would come from the schools that we're having to feed into such a program. And it would be people that would be serving the community where they grew up, that they understand that. And I really, you know, I'm really hopeful we're able to pull this off. I think there's still in conversations. I had some meetings early on with El Centro about how to make this work. And so that, you know, that kinda, you know, again, I really do think that's something that would be a boon for the whole city.
I have a question for both DPD and the sheriff's department. What about programs like that for alternative schools, the juveniles? Because I'm wondering, are they being missed? Not the ones with the criminal background, but I know there are a lot of students that are in alternative schools, not because of their background, but because of things that's going on at home where they got in trouble, they can't function in a regular school. So they've been thrown into an environment where they're there with people with true backgrounds. Are you guys going into alternative schools and reaching, because those counselors know who those students are, reaching them to let them know, though you're here, this is not defining your tomorrow? A lot of those kids thinking that because they're in here, that's it for them. I can only work at a Taco Bell or wherever. Are y'all going, are you just limited to just regular schools? Or are you going into those alternative schools? And I'm just curious, because I know they probably go to your court, where they got into some sort of a fight, but no background, but they can't function in a regular school. And I know, I know, and speaking from experience from Greenwood ISD, they have that, where they're separated because they can't function in a regular classroom. But I'm wondering, can y'all go into an alternative school and recruit the seventeen and the eighteen-year-olds?
I, 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 so we do have one alternative school for Dallas County. And we have two deputies that actually work at those schools. So we have them for school. Are we recruiting them? No, that's, I guess that's an opportunity that we've missed. Let the panel say, I think we need to... I'm trying to change the culture that I have in my personnel section. What I've noticed when I first took over personnel, the first thing that we find that, that you had in your past, we take you up the process. And as the judge said, we've all done something, or y'all all done something when you were a kid. So is there an opportunity to give somebody another chance? So that's the culture that I'm trying to change first. Because regardless of you putting in all these programs, if you still have the same people doing your background, it's not gonna change. So we have to change that, and like I said, I think we're missing the opportunity in these alternative schools.
Criminal justice alternative school, that's a different piece from the alternative school that the public school operate, because most of the kids that are in alternative school, they're gonna be a good kid. So they've got an office that gets them there. Or they get there because sometimes there's some other things. Generally, it's an office that's gonna get them to get their people. Alternative schools are actually school districts, that's what that's about.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I do wanna bring in that one point, piggyback off her. I think one thing that was great when I went into the military was if you had simple misdemeanor, it was in our books, we made sure that we can file a motion with our prosecutor for you. We work with prosecutors, and we say, hey, look, this person is gonna contract and go off into the military. In thirty days, would you be willing to set aside this case if it wasn't a major felony case? That program worked very well. Most of those guys, even though they had, they may have marijuana charged, they may had disorderly, whatever the case may have been, those guys went off and became great soldiers and served our armed forces. One thing that I noticed is it's nothing like that in law enforcement. And I don't know if it's because of the education that we fail at with our youth. We think you might get arrested for a disorderly conduct, and because the image all over social media, once you get arrested, oh, that's it for you. No, that's not it for you. Like I said, I'm a prime example from that, from going to the juvenile courts, military, business owner. So, but I wouldn't seek that information. A lot of our kids, they don't seek that kind of information, so they don't know. So I think the education to the youth is important. Also with the recruiting of the law enforcement, I think that would help. Hey, if it's just a simple disorderly, okay, we all had those days because we don't know what each other go through on a day-to-day, just like law enforcement is regular people. I may have had a bad day with my mother and my father that sent me over the edge because I haven't been taught to manage my emotions. So I think to the recruiting aspect, I think that would help maybe. Also, the chief, as far as recruiting for more law enforcement, maybe like Paul Quinn, El Centro, the students in a criminal justice program, if they successfully go through the criminal justice program, maybe Dallas Police Academy, their final semester, instead of going into a program setting, they go to the academy. And then that makes them even more eligible for law enforcement. It can save law enforcement money because you don't have to pay their salaries. They use student loans to reimburse the academy for their training. And when they graduate, they got their bachelor's, and also they got a certificate from the police academy as a peace officer.
Yeah, our disqualifiers, it's so strict, and that's what I ask you to speak on, is that when people apply to us, you know, and it's changing, it's changing. But I was asking to speak on that, you know, how can you get in? What could your record look like? Chief, go ahead and comment on that. So there's, I guess, a couple of pieces to this. First of all, the state of Texas puts out the minimum standards, okay? And then on top of that, each department may add things, you know, that, hey, not only will we not take you, state says no felonies, we may go, you know what, even if you weren't convicted, if you've admitted to some type of felony, we're not gonna take you. You've admitted to, and so we also look at admissions, depending on what it is, how long ago it is. You know, I look at a lot of our drug disqualifiers because that's almost a whole different look. But, you know, when you start really looking at why things are the way they were, a lot of the drug disqualifier stuff really were written a long time ago, fifteen to twenty years ago, when there were additional, you know? We were in the drug war, you know? And, you know, there were a lot of things that you go, you know, this is, this is worse. You know, marijuana is worse than a robbery, you know? And so things have changed, but police departments, so it looks like most government entities, are slow to change. And we hold on to traditional thoughts, we hold on to traditional policies because, one, we're comfortable with that, and two, and it's hard to change that stuff, and nobody wants to put forth the effort. And so you have to start having champions in your organization and changing it. Like Chief Hall who comes in to say, hey, look, I don't think this is right. Let's revisit these things and go back and say, you know what, I understand this is about marijuana, but, you know, we now know we're better educated. Maybe that's not the way that should be as a disqualifier, the way it's currently written. You know, Adderall's a big thing that's a discussion. Yeah, and that's where, you know, the people that worked in police background, and I'm sure you see the same thing, they hold on to, this is the way it's always been done, will be done, the way it shall be done forever. And I am the one that withholds the integrity of the department. And you have to go, well, no, you're disqualified for somebody, that that's not what that disqualifier means. Or you're not looking at the really vitality of the whole person you put in a single act, somebody getting there when they were eighteen. And it shouldn't preclude them from a very successful law enforcement career.
Dallas, this woman goes northeast, southwest. She works with Ms. Pemberton out of Redbird Mall. She does it all, and she don't have to, not one little. She works with Ms. Pemberton out of Redbird Mall. She does it all and she don't have to, not one little. So that's what impressing about her is her, just her character of her, um, you know, just a God fearing, want to do the right thing type of person. So if anything I can do with her, I will do. Talking about your commitment to your organization, I want you to introduce that and tell them exactly what you do at your organization.
Thank you. I didn't know I was gonna be up here. So, um, the organization I started, uh, at, at the very end of two thousand fourteen. It's called Operation Blue Shield. So a lot of the wristbands that you wear, um, we designed these. I'll tell you about the organization in a minute, but let me tell you about the colors on this. Um, I started this organization because I was in New York. Um, I was there about ten thirty in the morning in a hotel and I heard a bunch of people on a street. And I opened the window because I couldn't imagine why people were picking on this little mini tiny street. And what I heard was, what do you want? Dead cops. When do you want them? Right now. And it was so heartbreaking for me that I actually picked up the phone and called the mayor. And I called Chief Brown and I said, I'm in New York and I'm seeing this on this little mini tiny street. And I have very serious concerns about what's happening in the United States. And I don't know what to do. And they, and both of them said, well, what are you gonna do? And I went, oh gosh. And I hung up. It's like, oh no, what have I done? So, but I started an organization called Operation Blue Shield. We took the shield name for a specific reason. And I don't know if you know, but in the Roman days, if I were a man and I was gonna go out and fight for war, you would be together. I would tear off a piece of my clothing tied on you. You would do likewise. And I'm giving you my shield and you are giving me mine. So the genesis of a shield is really old. But it means that we as individuals in this country should be shielding each other. We should be lifting everybody up to see if we can make our country a better place. So Operation Blue Shield is there to bring both sides together to stop what we see on the street. The yellow in this wristband are citizens like me. They are, and, and, and really and truly everybody, you guys out there, y'all are citizens. The blue on either side are first responders who are there to protect us. In this country though, we have forgotten that people who are in the blue. Judges, mayors, city council, police officers, firemen, EMS, teachers, emergency room doctors. Anyone who's taken help to serve and protect is a first responder. And they are also in the yellow. So I wear eight or ten of these every single day and give them out. I want people to understand we are about unity. Um, T-Hop, uh, thank you for this, but we have very, very strong programs that bring people together. With Mrs. Pemberton, we opened up a, um, community learning center in the Seattle apartments. We have taken a, an apartment that was three floors. They, they housed all of your junk, ACs and things like that. We gutted it. We had people donate and we have turned that into a learning center, after school learning center for children. The mobility rate for those kids that are staying there after school and mobility rate means if you start in September, are you there in May? In Richardson, we've got some schools where the mobility rate is sixty percent. And that means that mama and daddy had moved, because they couldn't pay the rent, moved to this apartment. This young child is taken out of this school, put into this school, and next thing you know, he's in another school and he's in another school. You cannot get a good education that way and you will end up in Judge Birmingham's court by the time you get old. Mobility rate at Seattle Ranch right now is ten percent. And we are having people from across the street coming in saying, can our kids come here? They are mentored. They are, uh, and, and volunteers come in. Dallas Police Department comes in there every day. They need to help students. So we took second floor, we made room for mouths. There's also a place up there to do yoga, study through your GED. And so we're gonna take the young kids to the older, uh, uh, teens and also to the adults. And that's just one of our programs. We have a reentry program that we are going to bring to Dallas. We have the money to do it. Residucism rate in that program is less than six percent. But it integrates, you know, of first responders in the, in the, um, uh, in the mentoring of an individual coming out of prison. So he can become, he or she can become a responsible, um, a citizen and a better father and mother. But it's this integration of our first responders, teachers, corporators, all in one person's life can make a huge difference. So we have a number of programs, uh, again, it's called Operation Blue Shield. You guys will look it up on the website. We need volunteers to help us. We, uh, have been asked by the city of Atlanta to even open up an office. Uh, we've been asked by the city of St. Louis to open up an office as well. So we know that this integration of both sides coming together works. It's just that we got to make sure that we work harder as a country. And we also step back and take a step at once a while. Our first responders, they deserve our support. They are mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, aunts, cousins, just like that. And then our first responders too also need sometimes a break too. If we do that, we can make better time. But if we work together, we can.
Tony, I appreciate it. Good time. Doing great things in the community, guys, from both sides as the, the bridging of the gap. But this is, we're starting right here. Uh, next, Dr. Williams here is, he is the mayor's chair for the, uh, Citizens Police Review Board. So I just want him to introduce himself and kinda tell you what that thing looks like and how it's gonna work.
Thanks for having me here today. I appreciate the, the opportunity to speak to you. So I am the chairman of the Citizens Police Review Board. I've been in that role since December of two thousand seventeen, so for a little over a year. And Mayor Rawlings approached me like in October of seventeen about taking on this role. And it wasn't something I jumped into for a number of reasons. You know, I have a full-time job, I've got a family and this was, this was a volunteer position. That I didn't know what that entailed or what it was about. And honestly, I didn't even know that the board existed until he mentioned it. So I, I spent a few weeks learning as much as I could about the history of the board, what it's meant to do, the makeup and what you wanted to do moving forward. And in the end, I, I said yes, for, really for one reason. I felt there was an opportunity to do something to, uh, help the relations between civilians in Dallas and the police department. And I felt that I could play some role in that. Now, why did I feel I did that? Just my background. I was a former Air Force officer, I went to the Air Force Academy, um, my.
How you guys doing? My name is Andre. I'm one of the founders of Design to Ink. And our mission is to get back to the community, put money back to the community, the same community that supports us as a small business. So every month, we do a different event, uh, at KB Pope Rec Center, uh, and we give it specifically to the kids. Our last event was a dodgeball event versus Dallas Police. Our next one is February the sixteenth. It's Dallas Police versus the community in a laser tag event. So we're very excited about it. Every month is something new that's coming out.
Hello, my name is Terrence Hopkins. I am the president of the Black Police Association. And, uh, today we had our first town hall community meeting. And this is gonna event, be a event that we do monthly to invite the public into our space to talk about the issues that are, uh, prevalent out there today in our community. So please, please, please look out for us to have this event every month and everybody in the community is welcome.